Okay. All right. Okay. Okay, all right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Council Chambers. I'm Councilman Ed Weisling. I'm the chairman of the committee. We are here this morning to conduct our 12th voting session on text amendments to City Council Bill 12 dash 0152, which is transform Baltimore zoning. Electronic files are being made available on the City Council's website. The draft amendments can be downloaded from the bill file page by inputting the following link into your web browser, which is HTTPS backslash backslash Baltimore dot Legista.com. A copy of the draft amendments has also been placed in the bill folder located in the Executive Secretary's office. Natwana Austin at City Hall. I encourage everyone to visit the City Council's website to stay updated about the bill. The Land Use and Transportation Committee intends to work progressively through the proposed amendments, page by page. We will vote on as much as we can during today's session. Public testimony will not be allowed during the voting session. City agencies may be questioned about particular amendments being discussed by the committee. At this time, we have, to my far left, we have Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton. To her immediate right is Councilwoman Nick Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To Councilwoman Mosby's right is Councilman Bill Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Directly across from Councilman Henry is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. To my far, my left, second to my left is Councilwoman Ricky Spector. We are also joined by Angela Gibson, representing Mayor Stephanie Rollins Blake. And we have, to my far right, we have Kara Kunst with Paul Plymouth, representing the President of City Council, Bernard Jack Young. We also have Mr. John Willis, Dexter Kara, who is the attorney, representing the Land Use Committee. And to my immediate right is the staff person to the, to the committee in regards to transform Baltimore is Jennifer Coates. My one and only ground rule is please turn off your cell phones or smartphones and put it on mute, vibrator, to give courtesy and respect to, to the committee. Before we get started, I just want to, yeah, acknowledge receipt of communications. We have, Committee of Communications from the, from the council is Councilwoman Henry had a map amendment. Councilwoman Clark, we have withdrawals dated January the 11th. By the agencies, we have Ms. Sharon DeBoigne from HCD, new language for Title 15. Other organizations that submitted by other organizations is Ms. Shannon Dawkins Wren from Hampden Community Council. These are map amendments. We have Mr. Christopher Mafumi from BD Development Group. These were map amendments. We have Mr. Ernst Valerie and Joshua Neiman. These are map amendments. My constituents, we have Mr. John and Mary Hampden from Mount Washington. We have Ms. Julie Tong, resident of Smith Avenue in Mount Washington. She opposes the rezoning of a parcel near 1603 South Road. Holly Coleman, resident of Mount Washington, letter of opposition to Office Residential One zoning designation located at 1603 South Road. This was dated January the 8th. That's it?
It's ridiculous. They were already doing that correctly, so...
That's it? We're, we're starting on, we, we, Councilman Kraft's going to be here, but he's running late. Prior commitment. Yeah. You know, we did all these, right? Councilwoman, Councilwoman Clark, regards to withdrawals, there's a, you have a number of withdrawals. I mean, I could do 16 and 17. You have it in front of you?
In the package.
They're in a package. I just want to make sure. Does everyone have his package? Right here. Everybody have his package?
Yep.
Okay. I'll, I'll read them, and then we can do a motion, okay? If all my committee members have this, the withdrawals on Title 16 is T 543, T 669, T 547, T 668, and T 667. And then on Title 17, it's Title, it's T 647, T 564. And then on Title 18, it's T 587, T 588. And then we'll go down to Title 19, it's T 591 and T 593. So, do I have a motion for withdrawal? Okay, do I have, okay, Councilwoman Clark moves withdrawal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that, Councilwoman Mosby, second. All those in favor of the withdrawal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and those amendments are withdrawn on Title 16, 17, 18, and 19. We are on, we're starting on T 5, we're on page 253. And we won't start on T 530, but I just want to, which is, yeah, T 530, which is page 253, line 2. This is outdoor, outdoor storage, but I think that with our conversation, I think that Housing, there's HCD, you have amendments that's compatible to Mary Pat Clark. And let me just say, Councilwoman Clark has amendments, but I think HCD, and you worked this out to where you could go with HCD amendments. You got to use the microphone.
Mr. Chairman, the amendments that are being submitted by Housing will cover my proposed T 530, 531, 532, 533, and 534. So that, that's, it's the whole Magilla.
Can we just do, can we do all of them? Okay. So Housing...
I'd like to move approval of that, of that combination of amendments that Mr. DeBoigne has prepared based on...
Okay, so Councilwoman Clark, she moves 530, 531, 532, 533, and 534. It's moved by Councilwoman Clark. Do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Middleton. Weisling votes yes. Kraft is absent.
Yeah.
Branch, Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Is Henry here?
Yeah.
Henry?
Yes.
Henry, yes. Middleton? Middleton, yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. So we have one, two, three, four. We have five yes with... You got to use the, get up here, use the microphone.
Mr. Chairman, Housing's amendments incorporate these things, but are, but they're diff, their amendments include a lot of this, but it, they include other language, and there's a sheet that doesn't have a number. And I was just really referencing...
You can move, you can move Housing amendments.
Okay. Let me withdraw my motion to use just my amendments, which I, I apologize for. And, and you withdraw, right? Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, Housing has prepared some wonderful amendments.
Okay.
And I would like to move their adoption by this committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It moves.
And in, and so, Mr. Chair, with that adoption, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw my T 530, 531, 532, 533, and 534.
Right.
I need a second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Withdrawn.
So Housing adopted...
Okay, so now...
And these withdrawn, okay?
Okay. So now, we are on T 916, which is page 254. 250, yeah. We are on T 916, page 254, which is 15-512. This is Porches, line 33 to 39. This was Councilwoman Clark, something about language.
250 what?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. What, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, where are we?
We're on, we're on page 254, which is T 916. And it's on 15 dash 512. This is the Porches. And...
Oh, this is, I think this is...
And it was something, you reviewed the language. So you have an amendment on this, and there was a question to...
T 916. Oh. I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I, I apologize. This is not my amendment, but it references one that I believe was submitted by the Remington Neighborhood Alliance.
Do you have any language to this?
No, I, I don't, but I thought, let me just, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Okay, no, it's my error. And so I, I withdraw my...
You withdraw it?
...porch language.
Okay. Do I have, are you moving the withdrawal?
Yes.
Do I have a second? I second it. All those in favor of the withdrawal, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. T 916 is withdrawn. Now we're on T 801, which is page 256. This is planning. Do I have a motion to move? Do I have a motion to move planning? It's...
Would, if you'd like clarification, I'd be glad to do that.
This is page 256. What line is that?
It would be to delete line, and that's not in your chart. It's delete lines 32 and 33 on 256.
Delete lines, what is it again?
32 and 33, which is the size of the concrete pad. The reason for that is there are sometimes smaller cans or dumpsters, so we don't want the pad to be bigger than needed.
Yes. Okay, moved by Councilman Henry. Second by Councilman Mosby. Weisling votes yes. Kraft is absent.
I can't get my...
Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry's yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton, yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby's yes. We have five yes with two absent. Motion's moved. Okay. Now we are on T 535, which is technical in nature. That's technical in nature, so...
Yeah, I just don't know what this sentence is saying, Mr., it needs to be amended to say something. Every effort must be made to install small or from the public right of way. I mean, it means something, but there's some words missing.
Yeah.
I believe it was not visible from the public right of way.
The what? I'm sorry.
Not visible.
Okay.
Small what? Trash cans or what?
Small antenna? Isn't it small, big antenna?
Yes. Kara? Who was, sir?
Okay, wait, let me, let me check. Go ahead.
Okay, page, well, let's go back. It's page 257, line 23. Every effort must be made to install small or from the public right of way. So where's the typo?
Oh, this is under the small...
This is, this is Councilwoman Clark's technical amendment.
No, it is a typo. I'm just trying to get something in here that is a sentence.
English 101?
Yeah, I mean, it's a compulsion with the subject.
Mr. Chair, I think... Mr. Chair, I think it's small satellite dish antennas. I mean, that's the subject matter of the, of H.
There needs to be... Or...
Right.
Or what?
Or away from the public right of, right of way.
So, I'm sorry, so it should read, every effort must be made to install small satellite dish antennas away, away, away from the public right of way? So or doesn't need to be there at all?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes. Well, that's a vague term. I mean, we don't even know what it says. Why don't we just delete the whole thing?
The next sentence is more specific, though. Satellite dishes are not permitted on any facade that joins a street unless...
You're not, you do...
You could, you, right, you could delete the first sentence.
You can. Okay.
Councilman, you could delete the first sentence and just have the second sentence, if that's clear.
Okay, well, if planning is comfortable with that.
Yes. And can I ask a question as we adopt the second?
Okay, well, before we go down, so you're making a motion to delete, delete that.
Delete the line 23. Move to delete, move to delete line 23 on page 257.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, all those in favor to delete?
Friendly amendment?
Yes.
We want to move the 2 down to line 24.
And move line 2 down to line 24.
Not line 2, but 2.
I mean, number 2, numeral 2. Down to line 24, yes.
So it's line, delete line 23 and 24?
No, just 23 and move the, the parentheses, two close parentheses, down to line 24.
Okay. All right, I got it, I got it. So we have a motion by Councilman Henry, right? Councilwoman Clark? Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. So it's...
Question. I have one question, Mr. Chairman. Who, in the sentence remaining, satellite dishes are not permitted on any facade, et cetera, unless a report is submitted to verify that this facade is the only location that receives an adequate signal. Who would that, does anyone know who would be the person?
You got to use the microphone.
I would, I'll defer to law, but this, just to give you the context here, this came to our attention from some of the folks in historic districts. It was actually someone from Butchers Hill who requested to not allow satellite dishes on the front in their historic district. And our investigation was, there are legal limits on prohibiting them if it's a signal issue. And so, I'll, law can better explain that. So, but the, the reason for this language is to say that you can't do it unless...
That's fine. Okay. I'm going to be sorry later. It's 24, line, lines 23 got deleted and 24 to 26 saved.
Councilwoman? Okay, we're ready. Okay, so that takes care of T 535. So now we are on T, there, these are, there's three amendments, Councilwoman Clark, that you have, that, the T 536, T 537, and T 538. So these three, you, you were going to, for the committee to understand, for the listening audience, is these three amendments, you were going to defer to tables, but you're questioning that we could...
And I realized...
Yeah, well, you want to use, you got to use the microphone. Are you withdrawing these, or you look at one?
No, I'm not withdrawing them, Mr. Chairman. What I asked was for the committee to make a decision. I realized, as I was reviewing these before this hearing, that I can't defer them to the tables, because this matter is not going to be taken up in the tables. The, the specific windmills, solar panels that I'm talking about are not in the tables. They are part of generic terminology that, that is in the tables, but they specifically are not. So I thought, well, when we get to the tables, I'm going to be out of luck trying to make an amendment. So I thought we could do a, maybe a text amendment, or at least I could try. Okay.
I, I, I understand, and we're going to take each one at a time, but, I mean, I understand Councilwoman Clark's concern, and I do support that, but then I see, why is it not legal? I mean, you have a quotation here from planning not legal, so whether you or the law department...
Who, me? Oh, oh, I see, on the table. Well, let me, let me just give the, if I can, may, give some context for the commission on how Title 15 works and what the thinking was here. Basically, Title 15 is governing those things that aren't really part of the building necessarily, all those extra little things. They're not the uses, but they're the porches, or the pergolas, or the, in this case, the windmills, or that sort of thing. And the goal was, and, and this was, worked very carefully with our sustainability staff, to try to be as flexible as possible on alternative energy systems. So what is, what we did in the approach to alternative energy systems is broken into three categories. The most intense, of course, is the industrial type of alternative energy, where you have, you know, a, a field of solar panels, you know, in an industrial park. That is a very clear use, and it's permitted in industrial areas. The medium one is the newest area, which is the community energy, which is something that was authorized by the General Assembly, and is the concept of a neighborhood or a small group of property owners who maybe want to put some solar panels or a windmill on their common space, and then they all feed into it. That's called community energy, and that's outlined as such. Title 15 covers the alternative energy systems that are the things people put individually on their property. It is not a use. That is why it's not in the tables. It is, you know, me putting solar panels on my house, or a windmill in my backyard. It is the standards that would govern something that is not a standalone use. It's just like when you get central air conditioning, and you have a, you know, that box in your yard. So this is the same kind of thing. These are simply the standards for something that is otherwise permitted. My suggestion to the council in considering these would be, if you are conceptually okay with the idea that someone can just put these things on their house, you would leave it here, and if there's some concern about the standards, they're not adequate, they don't, you know, address a problem, or communities don't want these things in the front yard, that sort of thing, then we, I would suggest that you amend or tighten up these standards. My concern in the draft I saw from Councilwoman Clark that says go to the zoning board really doesn't address the matter, because it's not really a, a use. It's not separate from your house or your business. I'm not sure if that's clear.
Actually, if I may respond. It is a u... I'm sorry.
Before you, are you finished?
Yes.
The law department want to, you have any input on this? Want to use the microphone?
I don't think I want to, I don't think I want to wave in. I mean, my, my view is, it's not illegal to amend this the way the councilwoman would like, but I, but I understand what planning's concern is about the entire chapter, because the entire chapter is not about use, given her, given her, her terminology.
But it would be legal for us to vote.
You could. I mean, you could also just amend the tables and put these things in as councilwoman would like, and just say that you can put it a conditional use, if that's where you want to go.
I mean, if you, right, I think the, the issue would be if you don't agree with planning and sustainability, that this should be relatively easy and permitted, and want the property owners to need to go to the board, then you would move them to tables.
Okay, that is, because I have the same concern that the councilwoman has in my, in my district, that they want to put this large satellite on top of the roof, or whatever, and the rest of the, the block may not agree with that. So we got to have some sort of, some sort of avenue for them to...
And you may want it differently between the windmill versus the solar panel on the house. Arguably, somebody puts panels on their roof, nobody, you know, for the most part, people don't see those. And we're seeing a huge increase, just as an aside, in building permits. The volume of building permits coming into the city, because our sustainability office is looking at this, on these solar panels is mushrooming, because they're becoming more affordable. You know, they're starting to really pay for themselves.
Councilwoman Clark?
I'd be happy if we made a decision that we could break out these three issues into the tables, and we can deal with them when they get there. I just don't want to arrive at the tables and be, you know, with no recourse. If somebody wants to put a windmill in the yard next door to me, I want to know about it, and the only way I'm going to know is if there's a zoning board requirement.
I, I would ask the committee to, I don't necessarily agree, I think we've addressed the windmill with the standards, but if the committee disagrees with that and would like public input on the windmill, maybe we could treat the wind differently from the solar, because the solar really is becoming a very routine item on people's houses. And that's really just in the last year.
Okay, Councilman Henry? You want to add? Yeah, Councilwoman Clark? Yeah, sometime it's very difficult for you to get the microphone. Now you're holding on to it. Councilman Henry?
Just, just asking for a quick clarification here. If we wanted to have an actual use for windmills, where would be the appropriate place for that? Do, do we have to, do we have to add something in text, or can we just add it in the tables?
It can just be added in the tables, and then you decide...
Basically, we just need to do a table amendment to create, you know, a, a conditional by board use for...
We're not going to let you hang.
Okay. But, but if we did that, we could leave the rest of this alone, and solar panels would just go.
Well, wait a minute. The rest not decided yet.
Microphone, microphone.
If we, you may, if we make a decision that will deal with it in tables, let's debate what, what, what expanse of solar panels, like if it's not there on the ground and around a, in other words, there's solar panels on roofs and things, and then there's like whole fields of panels, and so I just want people, and then these large antenna are a big deal things. So I don't want to debate it now, if you're willing for us to... So, I don't wanna debate it now, if you're willing for us to deal with it at the table level.
We will, yes, yeah. Councilwoman Clark? You have my support, I'm with you on that.
I'll, I'll point out to, um, to Planning that unless I'm missing something here in the, in 15517, there is nothing limiting the total size of a commercial alternative energy system.
Again, these standards are not for the commercial.
But it says right... It is, right here, it says, "For a commercial alternative..."
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this, the standards go for both, yes, I'm, I'm sorry.
So, my question is, is our commercial, is there a separate definition for commercial alternative energy system that speaks to the total size?
No, the commercial is handled as a use, and it is limited into the industrial areas, and the heavy commercial areas, right.
Okay, so you can't, so, okay, next question. Just trying to figure out the, 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 where the limitations would be. If someone had a very large residential lot, as long as they met these standards, uh, read here in 15517, page 258, um, from lines 21 down, um, as long as they are, are keeping them three feet from the lot line, and no more than 10 feet in height, they could have an entire acre of solar, and as long as they don't sell that to people?
Uh, correct. Again, just, um, for reference, the definition of the three tiers of alternative energy are in definitions, page 11.
Okay, thank you.
So, yes, I think that makes that clear, and the, the things on your house are "alternative energy systems colon private," and that means primarily produces energy for consumption on-site by the owner, and secondarily supplies excess to the grid.
Okay, I got you. See, here's, and the reason I'm, I'm trying to make sure that these distinctions are clear, and I will just throw out that only commercial, oh, I guess, do we have, does it say "private" back here? Uh, I'll, I'll check that later. I'm, Mr. Chair, I, I am extremely supportive of putting more solar panels on houses and, on roofs. I'm not a huge fan of solar farms, because I think the, any extent of green space that is being used for solar panels should be green space. We need more green space in the city. But somehow, I need to figure out how we distinguish between that for, so, I, I, but I, I'm, I really do believe this is a tables.
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna have to deal with this at tables.
We did, I mean, again, just for reference, the, the, you know, initially, we thought, well, if it's on the roof, it doesn't matter, you know, and, and very, as you described, it did come to our attention, and again, the Sustainability Commission urged the absolute maximum flexibility, that there are homes, and there was one being considered in Mount Washington when we were drafting this, that the roof didn't work at all because of trees, and they wanted to put a, it wasn't huge, but it was maybe 20 feet by 20 feet of panels in their front yard, and, um, that's...
I think that was the Chimes.
Yes, it was the Chimes property. And, you know, so, there are unique circumstances, and it, it is very difficult to craft that one-size-fits-all.
Mr. Chairman...
If you could, you just wanna make a motion to defer...
I'd like to move to defer all three of these recommendations to the tables, and it is my understanding that in making this motion, I have this committee's approval of the attempt to put specif, these specifics into some kind of use category.
Got it, you got it. So you're making a motion, you're making a motion on T 536, T 537, T 538. Do I have a second?
That's correct.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Uh, those three amendments are deferred to tables. And now, we are on, uh, T 796, which is page 261, this is Planning.
Yes, I, I could defer a little bit to Public Works on this one. Um, it, um, is the, um, issue on radioactive waste. We didn't change the language from the current code, and, um, they have suggested that, um, it is no longer DPW, and that this section should either be deleted or referred to the Health Department.
Uh, DPW?
Uh, yes, Kristin Oldendorf for Department of Public Works. We do have an amendment on the agency amendment sheet that was handed out, I believe the date is November 19th. They're not numbered, but it's the only amendment in Title 15 from the agencies.
You have an amendment?
Yes, I, I believe it...
It's in the package?
I believe it was previously handed to the committee. Uh, but it basically just deletes the sentence, uh, line 41...
I think the committee wants to see the amendment. Was it already, was already presented to the, to the committee?
It's in a packet, um, la, Language for Deferred Amendments from the Agencies. There's a whole package of agency amendments that were previously, I believe, submitted to the committee.
Okay, we need, we need to get those amendments out to the committee.
Okay, uh, this one is fairly straightforward. It simply deletes the sentence that refers to the Department of Public Works. So, line 41, where it begins, "No operation..."
What page?
Page 261.
261?
Yes.
What line?
Uh, line 41, where the sentence begins, "No operation that produces," through line 42, and then onto page 262, line 1. So that whole sentence, that just refers to, um, giving notice to the Department of Public Works, it simply strikes that sentence.
So you wanna strike a, at line going into page 262, correct?
Correct. We do not need to know. This is higher than us, yes. As long as they're complying with federal, state, et cetera, which is already in here, that's, that's all we need.
Yes.
The only reason I'm gonna make a point of this is, I know we're currently going through an issue right now where the Maryland State, oh my gosh, is it D, is it, it, it might be M, where MDE is being told when, um, dangerous chemicals are being shipped through the city by rail, but they're not allowed to tell anybody else who asks them because CSX and the railroads have filed an injunction in federal court forbidding them from sharing that information. So, given, given that, I don't understand why we would go out of our way to not want to be told.
Um, that, that sounds like a separate issue. This refers to operation that produces radioactive waste.
Right, I, I get that, I get that, I get that it's a different, different issue, but the concept of, if somebody is discharging or disposing of radioactive or hazardous waste, I'm happy that they're complying with the federal and the state regulations, but I don't know why we would deliberately say, "We don't need to know they're doing it." Why wouldn't we want to be told that they're doing it?
So, this amendment says that operations that produce radioactive or hazardous waste cannot begin without notifying Department of Public Works, and that's not in our jurisdiction. That's, this, this federal, state, that's higher level than the city. We're not approving anyone to produce radioactive or hazardous waste.
I get that we're not approving it, but this, as it's written, it gives us notice that it's happening. Why would we not want notice?
Okay, Councilman Craft?
What, the language is prohibitive. If you look at the language there, it says, "No operation that produces radioactive or hazardous waste may begin without at least three weeks prior notice to the City Department of Public Works." The City Department of Public Works cannot determine when that may begin. It's governed by higher laws than the city. We're, we're preempted.
Can we just, can we, but instead of striking it, can we just say that within three weeks?
No, because we can't deter, we cannot set that limit. That be, limit is being set by federal law or whatever. We can't say, "You can't begin for two weeks because federal law may say you need 30."
I get, I get that, I get that failure to comply would not keep them from beginning, but they would, there, is, is there any reason why we can't require them to give us notice that they're doing it?
Well, well, it says, before, well, then, then it fits into the prior thing of notice. It says, um, well, we're talking discharge disposal, and then on the following page, "Radioactive or hazardous waste materials must be transported." So, you're covering virtually everything with radioactive waste under some regulation. All this talks is about, is, um, producing it, and if you're producing it, you're gonna do one of those things.
I, I, I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll stop arguing about this now, because probably in the zoning code is a silly place to be having this conversation, so, okay.
Right, and, you know, and we do have a nuclear power plant right down here.
And, and we do have a nuclear free zone that encompasses the entire city. I remember.
Right. And we do have, and we do bring in nuclear waste, all kidding aside, we do bring it in through the harbor. I mean, on a regular, somewhat regular basis. It's shipped, yeah, it's shipped in, and it, and then it transported from Baltimore across the country.
Um, the other thing, I'm not sure if or how hazardous waste is defined in this zoning code, but a lot of medical waste is, can be considered hazardous waste, which could be a pretty large volume. So we don't need to know every time, you know, one of our many hospitals is transporting medical waste to one of their facilities that they are permitted for. Uh, we know where that is all being disposed of. It is in our 10-year solid waste plan, which was recently approved by the council. So we do know where these things are being disposed of. I don't think we need to be notified every time, you know, shipment's being made, or depending on how the definition is.
All my colleagues have the amendments. Council, who, who moves it? Okay, Henry moves it, second by Councilwoman Middle, I mean, uh, Clark?
Yes, and he said...
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Uh, 796 moves.
Let's take that out and look at it. Big deal, I could tell.
All right, now we are on the last amendment, uh, to the committee, T 795. This was, uh, the Planning Commission, we needed clarification. Uh, there's no page, no line, um, so, Planning, can you give us a...
Uh, this is, this is also, uh, Public Works, and I believe it is covered in the table. The concept here is that, um, Krista, I think this is in the table edit on permitted, um, items, again, that would be permitted in yards, and this is to make sure that stormwater pipes are not considered structures and can be in the yard, but it ends up as a table edit.
So you're deferring it to tables?
I think so, is it...
Um, yes, again, in that agency amendment packet, the last page has a table amendment for table T 922, and it simply adds stormwater management facilities to be permitted in roachments in front, side, and rear yards. So, so deferred to tables.
Okay. Jennifer, you got one of these sheets? So, T 795...
It's table.
Is being deferred to tables. And who made the motion? Moved by Councilman Craft, who's second?
Uh, Henry.
Councilman Henry's second. All those in favor, defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, T 795, uh, is moved. That, that ends Title 15. We are now on Title 16. We are on Title 16, which is off-street parking and loading regulations. We will start with, uh, on Title 16, we'll start with T 795, which is, uh, which is Planning Commission.
This is really technical in nature, it's just to add a cross, cross-reference to the table.
Okay, well, we already voted on technically.
I don't know, think we need to, it's just simply to do a cross-reference.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, the next one is, again, Planning, T 832, on page 265. There's no line, so it's page 265.
It's actually in there.
16301.
Line 14.
Line 14.
And it is to, um, delete or add, and, add off-street parking to the areas that do not need site plan review. We're on page 265, site plan, uh, review...
Subtitle 3, 16301, line 14. You got it?
And it, it may be better phrased separately, um, but the vote was to make it clear that site plan review does not review off-street parking. It says, "Site plan review of parking facilities..."
Councilman Craft?
Well, it's, the way that I read your amendment is saying, if you add the word "off-street" before, is it before parking, in parking facility? Is it before parking on parking spaces? Or is it before, which one of it is it?
Back to, "Site plan review is required before any construction or alteration of, or addition to any parking facility of, uh, five or more spaces." I would just say, except on-street parking.
So the thing that says off-street...
I mean, there may be a better way to phrase that, or just simply to say, "Site plan is required for off-street parking to any, um, it may be better phrased to just say, inserted the..."
If it's just in four spaces, site plan review doesn't, isn't required. If it's more than four spaces, it is. Is that what you're saying?
Right, five or more. So, uh, to any, you could, uh, probably better said by saying, "At the beginning of line 14, to any on-street, I mean, off-street parking facility of five or more spaces."
Okay, and just take parking spaces, just, I mean, take parking out from in front of spaces, and just say, "To any off-street parking facility of five or more spaces."
Okay.
Yeah, I'll move that.
Moved by Councilman Craft, or have a second? Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. T 823 moves. We are now, again, we are on, uh, T 824. This, again, is Planning, uh, page 265, at 16401. We don't have no line, so...
Uh, it's 16401, C 2, uh, which would be line 34 and 35. The context here is, there has been concern about, um, if someone is counting parking, this code gives you up to 600 feet, that it is recorded, so that, you know, there's no double dipping, or somebody else can't count the same parking, that sort of thing. And, uh, so the commission, um, suggested for the off-street parking, the land on which the off-site parking or facilities are located is within 600 feet of the lot line of the use, and, um, that there be a agreement recorded, private easement agreement recorded with the permit application, with an address, to tag that address.
Councilman Craft?
When we had the hearing on this, we talked about dropping this back to 300 feet... When we had the hearing on this, we talked about dropping this back to 300 feet, because this is, this is like if somebody has a bar or something like that where they have live entertainment, and you tell them that you want something, they have to have so many off-street parking spaces. I mean, 600 feet could be a block and a half or two blocks away.
It's up to two blocks.
Right, two blocks away. And, you know, if they're running cars all the time, two blocks away is a pretty far distance for off-street parking. Now, you know, from the business standpoint, it's hard to find off-street parking sometimes from within two blocks. But from the community standpoint, what happens is, the valet people just park the cars on the street. They don't take them to the off-street park when they're too far away. And we have that in Little Italy all the time.
I think the Parking Authority may speak to the valet, but before the council would consider taking this down to 300, it is currently 300, and after lots of study and lots of input from many groups, we recommended raising it to 600 feet. It is the more practical and flexible solution.
Right.
The approach here, generally in parking throughout this title, is that we have fairly traditional numbers of parking required per use, per square footage of use, and then some flexible tools to get to that number. If you were to decrease the distance, I think it would sort of set us back in our trying to be a little bit more progressive about shared parking and about walkable neighborhoods, et cetera. And I'm sure Melissa has more to ask.
300 feet is football field.
300 feet is one city block. So this is, this is two blocks, and that is very intentional, and this was something that was very much asked for.
Okay.
And I got places that need everybody happy with a business opening that they need to be.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Henry?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I was, I'm supportive of the 600-foot limit after extensive negotiations on the York Road corridor, trying to help businesses find appropriate parking, and sometimes there just is not a surface lot within a block. And there are other ways for the community, if it's a bad business, but if it's a good one, I'd rather not cut off our nose to spite our face.
Okay. Parking Authority?
We're also in agreeance with planning. We agree with the 600-feet distance because, as Councilman Henry was pointing out, it does make it more difficult if you reduce it down for businesses to find that parking to meet the requirements. This way, if someone has a lot and they're willing to lease spaces, their catchment area is much broader with 600 feet than with 300 feet. And also, you know, we're talking about C-1 and C-2 districts. They already exist. If we're not working with virginal land here in Old Farm, we're working with businesses and buildings that already exist with parking lots that already exist. And 600 feet just makes, as planning was saying, gives people that flexibility to use things like shared parking, or if a church owns a lot and leasing spaces during the week to a business. About valet, this isn't about valet. Valet's in another section. And actually, our valet legislation in Article 31 gives a distance that the off-street facility can be from the business.
Okay.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
No, I'm not going to do it.
Huh?
Yeah.
Well, we first talk about T-824, and then somehow segue into 917.
Wait, wait, I can't. Too many.
I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to move the change. I'll leave it at 600.
I don't have a vote.
Okay, all right.
Move, move me to the floor.
Eight-two.
You moved, Councilman Henry moved it.
I think it's eight-two, oh, I'm sorry.
Eight-two-four. Do I have a second?
Eight-two-four, yes.
Yeah, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark.
This is where you report the...
Yes.
Yeah, so, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. And T-824 moves. The next one is T-917. It's the same thing, regardless of 600 feet. Yeah. Okay, T-540.
Yeah, you just discussed it.
Are you on T-540?
That's a table amendment.
Okay, so we're deferring at the tables.
Move to defer to tables.
Do I have a second?
Defer to parking, T-540.
There. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor to defer to tables, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. T-540 is deferred to tables. We are now on T-806. This is planning, page 266, lines 11 to 14.
Parking Authority will speak to, uh, Parking Authority will speak to that.
Parking Authority?
I'm going to ask the committee to defer voting on this one because it refers to Article 31, our valet legislation. At the time that this amendment was made, we had just passed our valet legislation. Now that we've put it into practice, we kind of want to do a rewrite, a newer amendment for this. Additionally, it's just, there's some logistics that need to be worked out instead of just simply referring to Article 31.
Move to defer for language.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilman Henry, second by Councilwoman Clark. All those, move to defer. Favorable, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. T-806 is deferred to tables. We are now on T-811, planning commission. This is another Parking Authority, Laurie?
Uh, no, this is a relatively simple, almost technical amendment. There's a reference to an outdated manual, so it is delete lines 36 and 37.
Lines 36 and 37?
On page 266.
Second. So, somebody move it?
Yeah.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. And T-811 passes. We're now on T, if everyone's ready, T-819. This is page 266. This is planning. What line, let me see, what line is that?
Uh, this is 16402. It's lines 16 through 19, and it's, it's simply referring to the tables there, unless, and adding the sentence, "off-street parking dimensions unless otherwise approved by Site Plan Review Committee."
I'm sorry.
So it says, "Off-street parking spaces must be designed in accordance with Table 16402." That's the table that has the dimensions. And it would be to add at the end of that on line 17, "unless otherwise approved by Site Plan Review Committee." And that, the intention there is to make it clear that, you know, we have, we are, we are a built-up urban area, and there's often situations where you have an oddball amount of space or a unique solution that functions, and all the engineers agree that functions, but was not envisioned. And so that is just to give that, make that very clear.
Councilman Henry?
Okay, so actually, this is a great segue to the conversation we had by email last week about the fact that sometimes zoning board approves things contingent on Site Plan Review, but then it goes to Site Plan Review and changes. And the changes that Site Plan Review Committee makes might be changes that affect, not necessarily the decision that the zoning board would have made in a vacuum, but they might affect the response of the community to the project, which itself might affect the zoning board's decision.
I agree that we need to get back to on that previous issue. I think this is much more limited. This is essentially the section where it says, the table may say that a parking space has to be nine feet wide. And in a, you know, historic area or something, it might be eight feet, you know, eight and a half inches, and this would give that variability. And this is really the limits of what this is referring to. I think the bigger issue is, of that church situation, is slightly different, and we haven't figured out the perfect solution to that.
But here's, here's the question I would have about Site Plan Review Committee. Is there some type of absolute bare minimum, there is no way a parking space could be smaller than X, that exists in some type of objective standard?
I don't know if Melissa knows more. I mean, there's certainly numbers and guidance in all the manuals, and that's what you'll be asked to adopt in the tables. But, again, with an urban area, you know, we just have found that there is a need for some flexibility, that oddball space might become the, you know, the bike parking or some such thing.
And that, and that's fine in terms of oddball parking. What I, what I'm hesitant, no, hesitant, scared. What I'm scared of is a situation where there's, there's space that, let's call it, it's 15 feet wide, and the community looks at that space and says, "Well, a parking space has to be nine feet wide, so there's no way they can put two parking spaces there." So, since their, whatever the use is, is going to require at least two parking spaces, they just can't do it there. Well, then it goes to Site Plan Review, and Site Plan Review goes, "Yeah, we can squeeze two seven-and-a-half-foot parking spaces there." And boom, there's two parking spaces, when anybody else who's just reading the law might have assumed there would only be room for one. That, that's why, if we're going to give them this power, I'd like to make sure that it's some, it's, it's limited in some fashion so that at least it's something that people can pre-calculate.
Parking Authority?
Well, in Site Plan Review, the Department of Transportation has members of their traffic division trained engineers, and they are very careful about allowing spaces that they know won't work to go through. And so our office, because we don't have engineers, we defer to DOT's engineers in that sort of technical feasibility. That's what you're concerned about.
I get that. I'm just, I'm just trying to get a sense of, if a parking space needs to be nine feet wide, then it either needs to be nine feet wide, or it doesn't need to be nine feet wide. If we're talking about, well, let's shave six inches off of it because sometimes we might need to shave six inches off, let's say that, that they can do a variance up to, you know, 5% or something like that. But just saying that Site Plan Review has a blank check to make a parking space as big or as little as it wants, that seems to be an application of our responsibility in the code.
I could live with, you know, 10% variance or variation or something, somewhere there. I just think that, again, we...
That's fine, yeah. I just want to have something on it. Like, 10% is fine.
Up to, up to...
Up to 10%.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Yeah, I, I'd like to move adoption of the following additional language. Unless otherwise...
Councilwoman, you need to use the microphone.
I'm sorry.
Unless otherwise approved by Site Plan Review, the Site Plan Review Committee, for up to 10% variance of the standard.
Okay, we got that. It's moved by Councilwoman Clark, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. 819 is moved. Okay, 825, T-825, Laurie, you want to defer that to tables?
That is a table, yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to defer to tables?
Move to defer to tables.
Moved by Councilman Henry, second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor, say aye. The move is to defer to tables. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. T-825 is deferred to tables. Laurie, T-826 is page 266.
It actually covers, it moves on to 267, and the amendment is, delete line 6 after the words "corner side yards" on page 266. And that would end up, oops.
What line is that?
Uh, oh, my notes says line 6, but it actually is line 5. "This parking pad may not be located in the required front or corner side yard, period. Delete and must be set back one..."
Line 5.
I'm sorry, it's 267. It's, it's section 16404D. That is correct, and it should be line...
Six?
It actually is line 5. It's delete the phrase "and must be set back one foot from the interior side yard."
Do you mean?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to move?
Move, move the amendment.
Moved by Councilman Henry, second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor for T-826, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. T-826 is moved. We are now on T-918.
Okay, the, was the curb cut policy, and this is now, it's no longer DGS, it's a DT, is it DOT now?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we don't have language from DOT. Oh, you have the language?
Well, this, if I may, again, this was in the packet of agency amendments. There was language on two amendments for Title 16, both on page 267, if the committee has that packet.
Okay.
It was a question beforehand.
Right.
We'll speak to you also.
Yeah, what?
Isn't that formal? It's, it's the parliamentary procedure of this body that really endears it to me. The, this actually is an issue that just came up in my district, but the other direction, I got a complaint from a community association president that a neighbor had started to construct a driveway, and that no one had had any notice or, or had known that it was happening, to even have a conversation with them.
That's what, that's what we have all the time.
Right.
They, they do it, they, they create the driveway, they build the parking pad, and then they sell the house with driveway and the parking pad, and then they come back and say, "We want a permit," and it's a fait accompli. And then we get boxed into having to give them the permit.
Well, in this case, the property owner actually followed the rules and went and got a permit first, and posted it in the window of their house, 25 feet back from the street, where no one could see it until after the construction started, and that's when it occurred to them to go walk into this person's yard and go into their flower box and see whether or not that piece of paper in the window referred to something. So, what I would, what I was going to ask is, have you, is, I, would you be willing to support...
Let's do this. Why don't we, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to defer this for language. I'll review what we got from DOT, and I want to talk about...
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Um, can I, can I, can I read out loud the proposed language before I second it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I just was going to suggest adding to the agency's amendment at the end, "Review shall include community notification and a brief comment period for community input."
Yeah, but I don't know what a brief comment period means.
It means I would leave it up to the, the, I would be okay with leaving it up to the Department.
Let me, well, the, the Fells Prospect Improvement Association, and, you know, those folks may think a brief comment period is two months.
Ah.
You know?
Fifteen days?
Fells Point may think it's 30 days. You may think it's two weeks, you know? So, I move to defer.
We'll defer, move to second.
Councilman Craft moves to defer, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor to defer for language, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. And T-98... And T918 is deferred. We are now on T541, which is the Parket Association. This is landscaping, right?
I'm not sure. It's theirs, not ours. Page 268, 30.
Page 268?
Oh, sorry.
Lines 34 through 36. This is landscaping.
All parking lots must be landscaped in accordance with manual. And their amendment is that current and future amendments are subject to approval of City Council. Amendments to the landscape manual?
Fells for lack of a- Right, yeah.
Okay, so this is the same, this is the same issue, okay.
Okay, so is your motion?
Yeah.
No? Okay, not moved? No motion? Okay, all right. We are now on T827. That's Planning, page 269.
Uh, yes, this is on, this is on line 26. For consistency, change 300 to 600 feet.
Move the amendment.
Okay, so 827 moved by Councilman Henry. Do we have a second?
Line 26 and 27.
Seconded by Councilman Craft. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. T827 is moved.
It's just making it consistent for office.
We are now, Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Clark, we have T542, page 269.
Yes, sir.
Lines 40 to 42. Land banking.
Okay, here we are with land banked. The concept of land banking, required off-street parking, basically. Yeah. And so this is a new concept in our code, but at least as far as I know. So what it says is that you have a development, you have required parking. But part of that parking, you don't have to provide. But you could land bank the space that that parking would require. Up to 25% of the required off-street parking through the site plan review process. And that's a lot. So I would like to propose an amendment. That I would propose, well, all that I wrote on my sheet, I've got, what I'm saying is, land banking allows for designated a portion of land on a site that would be required for parking to be held and preserved as open space rather than constructed in parking. That's from the text. And I'm changing. I said not the Department of Planning. The zoning board may grant land banking of up to 25% of the required parking spaces, not through site plan review, that mysterious process, as a conditional use subject to public hearing and the requirements of this section. So at least people in a neighborhood and a business area would have a chance to know this was about to happen, maybe. Then I add, the set aside land must not be developed and must remain as open space available for additional onsite parking expansion upon request of the neighborhood association closest to the land bank property. The zoning administrator must investigate. And if determining that onsite parking spaces are no longer adequate to handle demand, like they get busy, may order parking space additions on the land bank set aside. And otherwise, where you can't build on it, you can't do anything with it. And if things get busy and they need the required parking, then he has to investigate and provide. Yeah.
Okay, Councilwoman.
I just maybe want to see if this is kind of like an example. And this is in Councilwoman Spector's fifth district, close to my border. But Councilwoman Spector, remember, and we all know, right there at Rice's Town and Hayward, there is the abandoned Lake Trout Restaurant. And there was a problem with, all of a sudden, because it was an abandoned place, vacant, someone just started piling cars and didn't go through the community association. It was an eyesore. They didn't get permission to go through a process. Would this be a similar thing that you're kind of talking about? No. I just need clarification on-
Yeah. The concept on the land banking is really a recognition that this is sort of a changing world, this whole parking space numbers. You know, we know as we urbanize and, you know, people get more progressive. We want them to walk more and take transit. But realtor, I mean, you know, the commercial folks still want big parking lots. And the idea for this came out of a project that I know Councilwoman Clark knows quite well in her district, the Giant on 33rd Street. And they, no, the 33rd, brand new supermarket. The developer and the Giant insisted, absolutely insisted on what we and the community thought was a ridiculous amount of parking. You know, very, very big lot. And they insisted on it. And, you know, go there today and the last, the back half of that lot is never used. It's a very successful store. If this were the case, when that happened, that back half of the lot that they were insisting on, they could land bank it as a compromise, leave it green, and then, you know, see what the market tells us. And then if they were to come back in a few years, they could, you know, vary, ask for a variance on the number or something to say, you know what? We have a proven track record that this parking is not needed. We'd like to, you know, get whatever variance to build on it or, you know, leave it permanent or whatever. But it's really just to give some flexibility, given that this whole world of parking lots is such a changeable item. We would be afraid with the Councilwoman's amendment that if there was a step they had to go through, an extra step, it might discourage businesses from doing the land banking. And they'd say, ah, rather than going to zoning board, I'll just pave it with asphalt, you know? And so that's the reason we left it very flexible.
Councilwoman Spector?
In the incident that my colleague is talking about, that was a vacated fast food. And so the owner of the property allowed a used car dealer to put his surplus cars on that. It had nothing to do with land banking.
Okay, Councilwoman Clark, then Councilman Craft.
All right. Look, Site Plan Review, even though now we have voted to open it up so people can actually go to it and the public, they can't speak necessarily, but they can go in the door. So can council people if that amendment stays, is indeed by nature a very internal process. What I'm saying is, if you want land banking, people around need to know about that. What you're banking is space that is required by the code to be provided for some kind of development. And we've already written in, and even before we've written in, like places like the Rotunda have been able to use the calculation of nighttime use, daytime use, you know, and come up with the number. And that's a fair thing to do. So the requirements are moderate now. But I'm sorry I wasn't in office, somebody was glad I wasn't, I guess, when the Giant came to Waverly. But I will assure you that although Giant customers don't use that back lot, the Ace Hardware Store does, and so do, you're talking about by Frisbee?
The eastern section of the lot.
Oh, Frisbee?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. But they, but the whole neighborhood of businesses uses that Ace end part. And I do all the time. So basically, I want to have some kind of way for people to reverse this land banking that they can operate with. And that's through the zoning administrator, having a neighborhood association like Better Waverly say, hey, we want to unbank because now we get parking problems. And then he would investigate and then they could go back and work to unbank it. I don't want it to go away forever because it could be needed and it's required. So I've got a motion and it's been seconded.
Sure, well, it's still open for discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. So, anyway.
Councilman Craft?
I've dealt with this a lot with a good amount of development. And I can use, I'll just pick one in particular. And that's the PEMCO plant, which is 20 acres across the street from Bayview Hospital. And, you know, when they came in, they have, I guess it's almost two acres that they set aside for future parking. And initially, they were going to put temporary paving on it for future parking. And I said, you know, there's no way in hell you're going to pave that. I said, because if you pave it, it'll never get unpaved. I said, you know, we're going to have you plant some grass seed there. And if eventually you want to use it for that, you can come back and say, you know, we need it for parking. And then we can talk about why you need it for parking. But right now, we want to keep that acreage for green space. And so, you know, we were able to do that and keep it at green space. But if we don't have the flexibility to let them to do that, and if we make them jump through a bunch of hoops to do it, then they're just going to pave it. Now, let me finish.
I'm not.
Okay? Now, the second thing is, sometimes, and this is just me, sometimes we have to protect communities from themselves. And let me use Fells Point as an example. In Fells Point, if we gave Fells Point the opportunity to pave everything, they would pave the inner harbor. Because they would rather have parking than have the water.
And they could get to-
I mean, it's, at this point, I mean, it's, you know, parking is more important than people than anything in Fells Point. So if we said to them, you have the right to come in and say, we don't want this green space anymore. We want it made parking, then it's going to be made parking. And there's going to be no ands, ifs, or buts about it. And I don't think that we should automatically give the community association the right to come in and say, you know, this piece of property that has been held aside by an owner to land bank and keep green, which may never get developed or turned into a parking lot, to be made to be turned into a parking lot, you know, to accommodate somebody. I mean, you know, our whole concept is, you know, take the concrete up, not put more down. And so, you know, I'd be very opposed to this. I mean, what I'm more concerned about is this, is that they land, I mean, they bank something and say, we don't want to use this for parking right now. And then they don't pave it, they just leave it. You know, I'd rather have it, you know, if you're not going to use this portion of the land now, you can't leave it bare, or you can't leave it with gravel or something. You got to landscape it, you've got to maintain it, you know, you've got to do that. Because sometimes they'll just like throw some grass seed on it. And the next thing you know, you've got two feet of grass and you've got weeds and you've got rats and you've got everything else. But, well, you know, but anyway, those are my thoughts about it.
Now, you made your, you made your, you made your point earlier, Councilwoman Spector?
Yeah, I just would, it's very, I mean, just like what happened in Port Covington. It takes time for assemblages, for big projects. And land banking should just be that, land banking. It shouldn't be in any way required to treat it except for future use and called land banking. Just put that area aside. I know that that's what Plank did with Port Covington. And so I was trying to do that in my district. I wouldn't have wanted the piece of surplus BG&E property that I was hoping what the city would get would be paved over because we were looking for it for economic development. So I think it should be just that, land banking.
Everyone made their point. Councilwoman Clark made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Henry. Councilman Rice singer votes no. Councilman Craft?
No.
Councilman Craft, no. Councilman Branch? Councilman Branch is no. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton? Yes?
Oh, thank you.
Yes. Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby?
No.
Councilman Mosby is no. So we have five noes with three, no, two yeses. Four noes with three yeses. Okay. So T542 fails. We are now on T543.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, by the way, excuse me.
You withdrew that, right?
Mr. Chairman, if you will allow, I have an amendment that I did not put on any sheet because-
Which one?
I mean, it's on my sheets here. And it is, I call it TEE. And it, are we on 270 yet? Yeah.
No, I'm going to go back to 269 for a minute.
Oh, okay. But, yeah, and it's about on right-of-way parking issues.
Okay. We had to, I can only, I mean, Councilwoman Clark, which one? We weren't, what are you talking, discussing? T what?
Mr., I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, pardon me, I didn't know that my colleague needed to stay on 269 for a minute. You have my sheets. I have proposed amendments that did not receive a number because in this case, I did not submit a prior amendment except this amendment, which has been on your, in your files for ages. It's about, but I don't want to get in your way.
Can, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Page 269, where we just were, in line 40. I mean, I'm line 39. And this is something I just addressed when I was talking a minute ago. Where it says, required for parking to be held and preserved as open space. The whole concept of preserved as open space even on a temporary basis, what does preserved as open space mean? And again, does it mean that you have to, that you have to landscape it? Do you have to maintain it during that time period? You could have it open space. It could be open space for six months, it could be open space for six years during this time period. I would like to, I would like to put, insert after that the words, including but not limited to landscaping and maintenance. So I would like to, on line 39, after the words, open space, insert the words, including but not limited to landscaping and maintenance.
Will the speaker yield? What I'm trying to, I'm trying to visualize this. If I had a parking lot that, or I'm sorry, if I had a lot which would be big enough to do 100 parking spaces with the bare minimum amount of landscaping required by the landscape manual. And instead, I would- the bare minimum amount of landscaping required by the landscape manual, and instead, I went to Site Plan Review Committee and said, "I'd like to build a more attractive parking lot that only has 75 parking spaces, but has really wide grassy medians between them." Would that, would the, would that count as open space? Because I think the problem is, we tend to visualize open space as a little parky area where kids can play, but the reality is, a really wide bit of landscaping would count as open space.
No, I think the more, the, the concept, at least as I perceive this concept, is, a person comes in and has a lot, okay? I mean, a lot for development. And let's say it's, let's say it's a half acre, all right? And they come in and say, "I don't, I'm developing a quarter of that," or one half of that ha, half acre, "I'm developing a quarter acre right now for parking. I've got a quarter acre there that depending on how I develop the rest of the project, I may need that for parking, I may not."
I, I get that that's what you're thinking, because that was what I was thinking too.
Right.
But the more we talked about it, the more I started thinking that it could be interpreted the other way, and while you were looking at me when I was describing it, planning and parking were nodding, that, yes, a developer might take that approach, and, yes, Site Plan Review might agree with it.
Councilman Henry, I think to, to answer your question, I wouldn't interpret this language as prohibiting your idea. Uh, the only caveat would be at the end where it says, you know, "The zoning administrator, based on use, could require the parking to go back in," you know, "if it's needed." So, your developer would, let's say, it became very congested, and that extra parking was needed, it, it's going to be a little more expensive for them to go in and kind of redo...
And just, and just to be clear, I'm not even saying that necessarily that's a bad thing, because it may be that that's the way that you make the community even happier with the project, is by making the parking lot itself a more attractive-looking place rather than being just this flat expanse of asphalt.
Right, and they could do, and it could be done the same way, if, using your example, if they had, you know, 100 parking space lot, they decided they weren't going to do 75 right then, and, and re, and, and not develop the others, then they would landscape and maintain the other 25. And that could be through, um, islands and, you know, knolls and things like that.
My only concern is...
Stormwater...
Would it be, would it be possible for us to spell that out a little bit more clearly in the language, not to prohibit it, but to make it clear that that's an option? Because otherwise, people who are reading it might read it just the one way as, "Oh, a big block of green space," and then be surprised to find out that this is how it was used. And so, I, I mean, I'm, again, I think that both are valid ways to come at this.
Something like alternative, uh, stormwater management, things like that.
Yeah, exactly.
So that you could have, like, rain gardens and things like that, that you could use as a divider.
Yeah.
You know, so that instead of having a, instead of having just a big, um, island, you could make it a rain garden.
I'm fine with that. I'm a little concerned when I heard alternative stormwater management, because stormwater management has to be permanent, so you couldn't do that.
No, I'm saying it, no, 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 no.
It could be in addition, just not the required stormwater.
I'm just using an example as a, what they could do is, they have to have their stormwater management anyhow.
Right, if it's over and above.
But what they could do is, instead of planting something, um, and planting, instead of planting some shrubs, they could put a rain garden in. But they'd still have to have their stormwater management, but if they decided to pave, they could take the rain garden out, as long as it didn't reduce their stormwater management. It would, but, but overall, it would be more helpful to have a rain garden and just have shrubs. You know, so, that's, that's the sort of thing that I was talking about.
Back to work.
Okay. So, now...
But I was, but, um, well, when I say, "Including but not limited to landscaping and ma, maintenance," then you've got "but not limited to," so you can use the alternatives, okay? Okay, so I move, I move the amendment.
Which one, where you...
The one that I just gave her.
Can you, can we get it in writing or something?
Page 269. We've got it right here, we just wrote it out.
All right, do I have a motion?
I have the motion. Bill Henry, second.
What does it say?
The motion, the motion, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. To reread the motion, on line 39, after the words, "Open space," we would insert, "Including but not limited to landscaping and maintenance."
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Uh, passes, um, eight twenty... Twenty-one? Eight twenty-one. Eight twenty-one, Plank, you want to make, you want to move at the tables?
Uh, yes.
Do I have a motion to move eight twenty-one to tables? Who can defer? Oh, second. Move by Councilwoman Craft, second by Councilman Henry. All those, uh, all those to move, defer to table, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Eight twenty-one is deferred to tables. We're now on, uh...
Are we on...
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, thank you.
T-544, page 270.
Oh.
I, just to note, uh, for the committee, uh, the Planning Commission recommended deleting 16-504 in its entirety, and that's a future amendment, so I think...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I apologize. Where are we?
We are T-544, page 270, line 32 through 44.
Okay, two, four, four. Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, I do have an amendment, and I see that we're accepting amendments from the floor, um, that I've actually written out and prepared, and it's on your sheets. I, like my colleagues, I didn't submit them months ago, but I have submitted them, and I'd like to have a chance to, um, do them. They're on page 270, if I may. Um, and I call them T-dash-E-E-E, and they include page 270, lines 12 to 31. And I apologize, although they've been on the sheets that the committee has for a long time. Mr. Chairman members of the committee, um, this is called 16-dash-503. It's called "On Right-of-Way Parking Bonus." Actually, it's really not a bonus. Basically, what this section says, as I understand it, is that a commercial establishment may use and count curb parking beside and in front of its land, its property, as meeting, helping to meet its off-street parking requirements. I object, I think it's bad policy, and I have a recommendation to, um, delete the whole section, and I would like, if, I would like to know if anybody would second that.
Okay, Councilwoman Clark moves, second by...
I'm second.
Over for discussion. You, you got a question on the motion, Councilman Henry?
Actually, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Um, so, I, I, I wanted to address this question to whatever combination of planning and parking authority is needed to answer. Whose idea was this?
Uh, this comes from, again, our many, many working sessions, and this is a, again, one of those relatively progressive ideas that many cities are moving towards to give a little bit of flexibility in our built-up areas. Um, and it is limited to the C2 and the IMU districts. It is not the C1, which is more than neighborhood. They have other tools to address the parking. Um, again, the Planning Commission recommended deleting lines 20, section B, 25 through And Melissa may have more to add.
Councilwoman, how do you...
So, plant, so planning is already suggesting getting rid of 25 through 31, and now Councilwoman Clark's amendment would take the whole thing out.
And I, and I, if I cannot get this defeated, I need a chance to exempt IMU.
Okay, let's, well, we'll just, we'll get to that. Councilwoman Craft?
No, I mean, when you say, "In the C2 district," it's not like the C2 district is like a district. I mean, it, it could be a building, you know? I mean, it, it could be a, it could be a building, and around all the C2 buildings could be resident, residential.
Yeah.
You know, and, and then, you know, you take away those buildings. I mean, this is ridiculous, I mean...
Yeah.
She's got the motion.
I made a motion.
And I got the second.
And it was seconded.
Move by Councilwoman, move by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilman Craft. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it.
I have more.
Yes, yeah. Um, that's, yeah, now we are on T-670. Councilwoman Clark, page 270, again, um...
Uh, oh! Um, yeah, fee and lieu, right, that's where we are. We're on page 270, uh, T-544, and then I have this, um...
Yeah, we did 544, right?
Okay, this is another, this is where...
We're on 544 right now.
We're, we're on T-544, page 270, begins at line 32, fee and lieu of parking reduction, and it goes to the next, no, it goes all the way to the bottom of the page. Okay. Here's the deal. You want to get, you want to reduce your onsite parking requirements, you can pay. Move to cut this out of this code.
Second.
So, move by Councilwoman Clark, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Craft. That's T-544. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. T-544, passes.
That is consistent with, um, the agency 815, so, um, you can, it, it duplicates the agency amendment.
Parted.
Number eight fifteen. T-815.
Also, though, um, the Parking Authority would like to add that we like payment, or fee and lieu, we love the concept of it. In fact, because when communities come to us, certain areas, and they're like, "Build us a garage," like, "Well, we don't have the money for it." This allows us to do that. But the mechanism isn't in place right now in Baltimore City, but this is something we would definitely want to pursue in the future, so...
Tell the mayor.
Okay.
Tell the mayor, it's a charter amendment.
Dolly noted.
Okay.
Where are we now? D-6, where are we on that?
Six seventy.
We're now on T-670. Councilwoman Clark, page 270. We already did that one?
Uh... Fifteen, five, oh, sixteen, five, oh, four, we did.
We did five, four, forty.
Did.
We just did that. Let me just, uh, my next one is 545. Under required exemptions from off-street parking.
Wait a minute, hold on for a minute.
Mr. Chairman, on, on T-670, it's a combat, it's a combined one. We just did, we just deleted 16-504, but it also says, "Delete 16-706," which is the same thing. It says a fee and lieu for bicycle parking.
Yeah, it's for bikes, it's the same problem.
It's the same thing, but it's a, it's a section that's a little further on.
Well, just keep it in mind.
That's all, so it's just a portion of that we didn't vote for.
Well, if I may speak, Mr. Chairman, people think it's just really nice, just like, um...
I'm just saying, do we not forget it when we get to...
Yeah, I mean, when we get, don't worry, I've got it as an amendment. We can't, it's so wrong to put all these bells and whistles that we can get. We require a charter amendment to dedicate money for any specific purpose, and the mayor of the city, and almost every mayor, automatically vetoes dedicated fund amendments. So, to say, "Oh, we can do this, and we can do that, and won't it be nice?"
So, we're going to...
It doesn't work.
Right. Okay. So, we're going to hold off until we hit 16 and 706, right?
Right.
Okay, so now we're on T-812.
I know you would.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Henry?
I'm sorry, just a, a general question. Does anybody know here if the, if, if there was reaction from the bike advocacy community over the pay and lieu for the, for the bike spots?
I talked.
And they, and we're...
They wanted, but not...
Why don't we get, wait till we get...
Okay, no, I just, I didn't, I had, I just didn't know if they wanted it. Okay, that's all.
Okay, so we, a question's asked. Okay, let's move on to, uh, T-8, let's move on to T-812.
Okay. God, help me, I'm going dyslexic.
We start it late.
Okay.
So, I didn't tell them we're going to stay at all. Go ahead. T-812.
We already did that.
Page 270.
Yeah, withdraw. Yeah, with, I think that duplicates the other language. Withdraw.
Okay, so, Councilman Henry moves to withdraw. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Craft. All those in favor to withdraw, T-812, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Uh, T-815, withdraw.
Yeah, those, 815 and 816 duplicate what you already voted, so we withdraw. 15 and 16.
So, we're going to move to withdraw, T-815 and T-816 together. Do I have a motion by Councilman Henry? Do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Craft. All those in favor, withdraw, T-815 and T-816, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. So, T-815 and 816 is withdraw. Now we're on T...
Forty-five.
Five forty-five.
Yes, sir.
Um, Councilwoman Clark?
Right, um...
Page 271.
Okay, give me, I'm second.
This is, section 1601.
I got it, okay. This is required off-street parking, subtitle six, exemptions from off-street parking requirements. Five forty-five, the, uh, I am, I have an amendment. Oh, God, have mercy, where is it? I have an amendment to, oh, delete, um, lines 34 to 37 in there. Give me one second to just catch up with what I'm doing here. Uh, exempt, oh, this is exempt.
Okay.
Oh, that, okay, so, this says that all these different districts are exempt from, um, park, off-street parking requirements, and, um, I would like to move to delete that section.
I don't think we need that.
Yes.
Henry?
Um, I'm going to point out that, uh, this refers to C1, C1E, C5, all non-residential uses in the RMU and DMU overlay district. Would you be willing to carve out the, allow this to just be in operation in the C5? And the reason I say that is that the person who represents the C5 isn't here to speak to this, and I would rather...
In other words, what, what do you say?
I'm saying, what if this was only, what if, what if only, what if only C5 was exempt?
Yeah.
Fine.
Okay, so...
I'll accept that amendment.
Okay, so who's...
Wait a minute, yeah.
It's not getting taped. It's not getting taped.
I'm sorry, um, I, I accept the friendly amendment and would be happy to leave C5 in as exempt from these parking requirements, removing C1, C1E, well, I don't represent anybody in C1E. Removing everything else.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor, say aye. Plank?
Um, this would, this amendment would, even as amended, the amendment, would really derail a lot of the approach, again, to parking. Um, the C5 is in there, it is, it's, this is the downtown, this is where we said, "You know what? Downtown should not have a parking requirement whatsoever. We know developers build more than, you know, anyway. We didn't put the limit on parking, but we didn't want any requirement." C1 and C1E are your main street areas. These are areas that by the definition of their neighborhood, care... neighborhood character, you would be tearing down buildings to build parking, and, you know, that's never been our policy. Right now, if you want to fill a vacant building in Waverly Main Street, you go to the zoning board for a variance, or you, you know, you slip your way in under some exemption, but, you know, it's never been city policy to encourage literally demolishing something to build a lot, and that's what this is based on. So I would really urge the committee to think twice about deleting these exemptions. The Planning Commission amendment modified the exemption and made it, you know, less of the items were exempt, and let me find that amendment, but I, to just throw it out, I think would be really a drastic change in policy, and if you, it's T-807 was the modification, but I think that this is something that I would urge the committee to really think hard on.
Councilwoman Craft?
Yeah, I think this is, I understand what the councilwoman is trying to do, but I take a C1, and you take an area like Highland Town or Canton, where you have C1 corner stores, and somebody, you know, wants empty, and, or somebody wants to redevelop something, and, you know, you have to have your off-street parking within 600 feet of it.
600 now.
Right, but 600, there is no off-street parking within 600 feet of many places in those densely populated, I mean, they're all residential, you have a C1 on a corner, you can go for blocks to find any off-street parking, so you would, in essence, be prohibiting those people from redeveloping those spots, you know, in terms of, you know, you'd end up with vacant corner stores, we don't want to do that. C1E is going to be, well, fellas, well, fellas, and Highland Town, we're going to, I mean, we're going to amend all of Highland Town Main Street to C1E because it's an arts and entertainment district, and, yeah.
No, no, I don't want to withdraw, let me, let...
Let Councilman Henry, you have a second.
So, I, I'm sensitive to the, to the concern that Councilman Craft is giving, and I think I also understand the concerns of Councilwoman Clark for placing the amendment. One of the things that I recall being a mechanism when you're trying to take a single building that's, you know, an old corner store or something like that, and converting it back into use, is you can go to the zoning board, and you can get a variance on the parking requirement. I, I will admit that in my district, there's very limited C1, and so it's difficult for me to envision a business moving into a C1 that needs so much parking that they would have to knock something down in order to build it, but I am willing to acknowledge the possibility that that's a more realistic concept somewhere else. So, if, if, if other people who represent more C1 are more split on this, then I would be willing to hear more conversation from other members.
Councilman, Councilwoman Craft?
Mr. Chairman, Councilman, I can give you a recent example where someone was required to have two off-street parking spaces, and they couldn't find them, but the law presently requires, allows you to put eight bicycle spots in instead of one parking space, so what they did was, they put two bike racks in.
Well, good.
So, you know, but it didn't solve the problem, it just put 16 bicycle racks across the sidewalk there, but it, it met the need of the off-street parking requirement, but it really just, you know, took the sidewalk up there, but, but, you know, I understand, I understand, you know, what you're saying, it's just a, it's just a big problem that I think we don't need to resolve, and the other part is, and let me just finish this by saying this, we are trying, at least I think, one of the things we're also trying to do separately, is we're trying to make it easier for people to do business and to start businesses here in the city, and, you know, we're trying to reduce the number of hoops that they have to jump through, and I think this just creates another hoop for them to jump through.
Councilman Mosby?
And just real quick, the restrictive nature of what we're talking about is very preventative to districts like my district, where we've seen so much disinvestment in so long, so I know that there are ways that they still would be able to be approved, however, again, it's just very, it's just additional hoops that they would have to try to jump through, and when we're talking about turning around communities like communities in East and West Baltimore.
So many of our decisions here have really come down to the fact that, on the one hand, we want to make it easier in Baltimore to open and run good businesses, but at that same time, there is immense pressure from our communities to protect them from bad businesses, and the reality is that in the near recent, those communities have oftentimes been threatened with bad businesses because there weren't good businesses that wanted to come in to those communities and, and be a positive influence, and so this is, this walking the line here of, how do we design this code so that it allows a good business in, but it offers protections to the community to keep a bad one out? That's what I, I mean, I don't mind taking a long time figuring this out, because that's a tough thing, and we need to do this right.
That's been a tough discussion throughout all of our meetings and drafting, and you may recall from some of our presentations, zoning can't protect against bad businesses, you know, a store is a store, you know, to a certain extent, if it's poorly managed, that's not often a zoning matter, and I think that, you know, there are other aspects of the code, sometimes you do have to take a leap of faith, I think the issue for us is, as Councilman Mosby said, what does this say to small businesses? We want your small businesses to jump through one more hoop, and that's our problem with it.
Yeah, okay, Councilwoman Clark, you want to wrap this up, because we're going to go into recess, because some of the councilmembers on the committee have to...
Mr. Chairman, let me, I need to say this, in the real world, in the real world, if you require a parking space for a C1, which I am loaded with in my district, Waverly Main Street, Hamden Main Street, Hetties, and Charles Village, et cetera, if you demand that, here's what the effect is. People in Hamden created valet parking, it's being accepted by the zoning board as an alternative because it's operational. Other people have found off-street parking, or they have gotten a waiver with the support of the community. The requirement creates, it creates the effort on people's parts to try to accommodate parking for their businesses. They don't always succeed, but they're giving credit at the zoning board when they don't and they've tried, that's what it's about. So, let's have a little balance for the people that have lived here all these years, and all they really want is a decent peaceful life and a place to park when they come home at nine o'clock at night from their work.
Okay.
So, I will come back with this as the first item at the next session, thank you.
Before we, Councilwoman, it's back to it, and we're going to go on recess.
Chair, I just wanted to duly note in the committee communications that was, here at the hearing, on the constituent issues dealing with a rezoning in my district, they are listed here, just those in opposition, I have a zillion emails of those that do support this, so I just wanted to have it on record, and I can produce them when that issue gets, comes before the committee.
Okay, it's on record, thank you. We're going to recess, our next voting session on bill 12th ASO 152 will be announced, I want to thank everyone for attending today's voting session, thank you.